I know. The one I listened to. Answer is nice. Yeah. And, uh, yeah. I mean, it should be crazy. I know.
Let me turn this on. Good morning. Welcome to the public meeting of Arapahoe County, June 20th, 2017. And I'll call the meeting to order. Oops. Hi, Gail.
Here. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Good morning.
Commissioner Baker?
Here. Here, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And John Christopherson, our deputy county attorney, is to my left, and Gail Stumpo, assistant clerk to the board, is to my right. And Mr. Christopherson, are there any modifications to the agenda this morning?
There are no modifications today.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the or adopt the agenda as presented?
So, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Conti. Please, are all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have one ceremony today, and it's recognition of Human Services and Information Technology for the receipt of the 2017 NACO Achievement Award. And I want to just read a little bit from the letter and then from the application that was submitted. So, the National Association of Counties is pleased to grant Arapahoe County a 2017 Achievement Award for its program titled "Human Services Case Management: Enhanced Efficiencies with HS Connects," in the category of Human Services. Congratulations to everyone involved in developing this innovative program. Your hard work will yield positive results for Arapahoe County residents, and I will say for many counties across the state, not just Arapahoe County, which is a really wonderful part of this. So, let me just read from the, this was what was submitted. "Arapahoe County developed and deployed a system called HS Connects for the case and workflow management of Human Services benefit applications and recertifications. Built in response to a need to handle a growing annual caseload of nearly 100,000 cases and taking advantage of process optimization efforts that had already occurred, HS Connects further streamlined the application process by 92 percent, reduced the loss and error rate from 30 percent to nearly zero, and generated recurring savings of $1.5 million annually on an investment of $180,000." Pretty good, I would say. "This efficiency allowed Arapahoe County to become one of two large Colorado counties that were able to comply with federal and state timeliness mandates in 2015, and this compliance was achieved by reducing temporary staffing and eliminating overtime expenses. In addition, HS Connects avoided a capital outlay of $2.25 million for a commercially available system with recurring maintenance costs of $250,000 more than it cost to develop the system initially. The system continues to be enhanced and deployed in other Human Services divisions and will, and with some reconfiguration, it can also be deployed in other departments or offices within Arapahoe County, extending the efficiencies and cost savings even further." I think this is just a wonderful story, tremendous effort by so many people, many that aren't in the room today that worked so hard on this, and congratulations. And David, Cheryl, do you want to come up and say something? What an achievement, I tell you, not just because it's recognized by NACO, but just in general.
Yes, we're very excited. So, I'm Cheryl Turner, the Human Services Director. Last night, I was thinking about this recognition ceremony this morning, kind of taking a walk back down memory lane as to where all this began, in 2012, when we were trying to acquire not only an electronic document management system, but an actual workflow system. Really, this started with Bob Prevost's vision to build the technology to distribute the work to the right person at the right time, allowing us to meet the strict mandates that we were under and actually be more successful in getting benefits to those that we serve accurately and timely. So, thanks to the leadership in Human Services and, of course, IT. IT has been phenomenal. We could not have done it without IT. They could not have done it without us. It was truly a team effort. We don't always speak the same language, so that's always a challenge, right? But, we were able to overcome those language barriers and really get the technology in place that we have today. It's definitely a system that will continue to increase our efficiency. It also saves money. When you talk about only two large counties in the state meeting the mandates and deadlines, we were the one of the only large counties that do it and stay within our funding, which I think is really important and speaks to the effectiveness of the system. So, and you're right, many counties are in line to acquire the system, and we are working right now with El Paso, Pueblo, and Adams Counties. They will be the next large counties to come on board, which is huge for us, because then we can actually access their documents and data to assist us in processing those applications that come from those other counties. So, it's huge. And so, I'll let David come up and say a few words.
Not let, but right.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Good morning, Board. You know, the best of IT projects combine vision, passion, and teamwork, and this was certainly one of those successful IT projects that had that combination. On the vision front, I think Cheryl, Bob, and Ray Moore, who was a former IT employee and resigned, really had this initial vision of what workflow and digitalization could achieve. Brian Bostwick and Jeff Langston in IT developed this vision from the technical side and pushed it to see how far we could go in dovetailing with the needs of Human Services and citizens with the excellent execution of technology. There was also passion in this project. Ray Moore, on his flex days, on Fridays, he would go over to Center Point and sit in the lobby, in the days when the lobby had people in it, and just observe the traffic flow and talk to the front desk folks to see what was going on, and figured out, you know, there's got to be a better way. And he just had a passion to make government efficient. We took that basic idea that Ray had, and he had a working prototype. We rebuilt it from the ground up in IT, and I think it's, the result is obviously been not only beneficial to Human Services, but to our citizens and our taxpayers across the board. What's really been interesting is when software developers who, you know, we have the stereotypical image of a software developer somewhere down in a basement, parents' basement most likely, you know, doing programming, you know, when we tell our software developers that their software may have saved a life today, it's a very, very rewarding moment, and that just drives that passion to a higher and higher level. And finally, teamwork. We did have two RFPs that we put out on the street, two solicitations that were unsuccessful, and after that, I still remember the meeting in August of 2014, we sat down in the Aurora Room at Center Point, and Cheryl said, "Can IT build something?" And we said, "We'll get back to you." And wanting to put our toe in the water, but wanting to figure out what that would look like, we actually decided yes, and we got back to Cheryl, and HS Connects was the result. It's a testament to how well IT and Human Services have worked together. The road was bumpy at times, and probably will be in the future, but we persisted because we had a common goal in mind. We had a vision, and we had the passion to pursue that vision. You know, today, not only is HS Connects continuing to evolve, two weeks ago, we launched version 2.0, but we're already, we started work this week on CSE, spreading it to CSE, and CAPS is in the future, and of course, as Cheryl mentioned, we're getting ready to spread this out to Adams, Pueblo, and El Paso Counties, as well as Eagle and Pittkin. So, I think congratulations to all of the team members who contributed to the product. Congratulations to the county and the board. We should all be proud of what we accomplished and take pride in the development that we created. I hope it's not a monster, but take pride in the development and the leadership that we collectively have taken in making people's lives better.
Well, thank you. You know, and I think both of you all bring up a really good point, that we sometimes get caught up in the technology and how that makes our workflows easier, and that's obviously the passion for government efficiency is, we need more people that have a passion for government efficiency, but it is about service to the people that we serve and our citizens, and in this case, people who are in need often, that they may need a benefit, and time is important to them, and not making errors and getting paperwork in quickly does, it does make a big difference. And so, thank you all. So proud of everything that you all have accomplished. Commissioner J, we'll just go down the...
I figured everybody would want to...
Want to be in, huh?
Yeah, sign the card, so to speak. Obviously, we are very proud of you. I scribbled a few notes while you were talking. You know, people think that government is boring, but it is not. We do exciting things here at Arapahoe County. Cheryl's team, those folks do literally save lives every day, and IT, besides having the, working with other departments and helping them accomplish their missions, there is an excitement and a sense of purpose in your department that just can't be beat. And when you combine those two things, that excitement and that absolute brilliance that folks bring with them on both sides, both the head and the heart, come together and create something that is just invaluable. So, as it has been said, this has been recognized by our sister counties. I've heard rumors that the state is very interested in it. Now, it's gone national with this award. Yeah. It's, when there's something this amazing, the recognition belongs with you and your departments, and we're just thrilled. So, overcoming obstacles, you could write the book on leadership, and I'll close with just the words I heard you two say, "Vision, passion, teamwork, overcoming obstacles, persistence, excitement, and worthy common goal of saving lives." So, thank you very much. I'm thrilled.
Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo everything that my colleague has said here. I think there are three important lessons that have come from this, and that is identification clearly of an issue and a problem, defining a solution, and bringing it to, bringing that change to fruition. I think that both of you represent what we really admire about our county employees, and that is the level of collaboration, that you're willing to work between smokestacks, knock those smokestacks down, and look at issues from a larger, more broader range, and look what you've accomplished. You've created a system that's nationally recognized, you have other counties clamoring for assistance in it, and ultimately, you've saved the taxpayers a whole lot of money and resources and personnel, and the most important aspect of this is that you've touched, you're able to more rapidly touch the lives of the people that we serve, and I want to thank you both.
I wanted... Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm just recalling, sitting at a long-range budget meeting where we were trying to, where we were talking about all the vast needs in the county and some deferred maintenance that needed to be dealt with and so forth, and possible difficult cuts that might need to be made, and Director Besen talking just, "Don't forget about the fact that I save the county money," and we actually are income-producing in the, and I'm so reminiscent of this, and so delighted. But in this case, you've absolutely proved your invaluable asset to the county, and thank you for what you have done. And I'd also like to say that for our young man who took his day off on his flex day to actually go in and observe, that really just says a lot about his passion. I mean, it's not the typical anybody's employee, much less government, that will take their day off to go sit and really evaluate and figure out what the problem is, therefore enabling us to know, to properly identify it, so we know how to attack it well. So, kudos to him as well for doing that, and thank you so much for all that you guys have done to be a model around the state.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
One of the biggest challenges any manager has is keeping their people engaged, and both of these departments, both Human Services and IT, have done a great job. There's a little bit, probably a little bit more variety in the nature of work that Human Services tackles, and when I went on my day shadowing people with Human Services, that was made very clear to me, the tough work that they do. IT, it's got to be very difficult to have your people come in and not do the same thing day after day after day, and you've given them the flexibility, David, to be able to tackle these projects, to challenge them, and I think that that's the sign of great management, and it's also the sign of an engaged workforce. So, to your people who make us all look good, I say thank you, and thank you for your leadership.
And that's a perfect segue. I just wanted to read, and we'll go out and take a, Cheryl, why don't you go ahead, and then I'll just read.
If I may, I wouldn't feel good the rest of the day if I didn't ask Bob Prevost to come up, say a few words, and just recognize those people in Human Services that are here today that really played a big role in accomplishing this, and then IT would like to do the same. It'll just take a minute. Is that okay?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Welcome, Bob.
Morning, Commissioners. The cool stat gets everybody's attention is four million sheets of paper reduced every year. As soon as I say that, a bunch of counties want to know more, so it's...
Yeah.
With us today, start with Martha Lovato, she's a Division Manager for the Operations Division.
Hi, Martha.
Kimberly Rash, the Administrator for the Operations Division.
Hi, Kimberly.
And Crystal Ruiz, Supervisor for the Records and Information Management Department. So, that's kind of where all the mail comes in, mail and faxes, and that's about 80 percent of our work, and it used to be a day or two before we would get the mail circulated to the floor. Now, when we have tours come, I tell them they have to be here at 1:00, because it's an hour or two and the mail is done. So, if they get here at 3:00, there's not a whole lot to see, so we're constantly asking them to slow down and save some work so we can show people. Then from Human Services, Scotty Day is not here, he's the Administrator for Community and Child Support Services. Kathy Smith is here. Kathy and Scotty, the really cool thing about HS Connects is IT is able to take those two brains and actually put it into their system, and that's really how it works. So, 82 different workflows, because it's really complicated work. And the other thing, I think, getting to the service is, in Human Services historically, when somebody drops off a document, child support needs a birth certificate, and food assistance needs a birth certificate, Medicaid needs a birth certificate, we're repeatedly asking this client to come back again and again and again. This way, the client can come in once and drop off a document, and anybody that needs it gets it. My charge from my boss was, "You need to make this lobby function as a bank." That was like in 2012, so we went from hours, if you remember the election, it was four hours wait time, right? So, now it's about 10 minutes for service and wait combined, so every 10 minutes, a new group of people is in and out of the door, and I haven't lost a single document in about three years, and you heard all the stats that David gave you, so, yeah, the collaboration is well worth the effort.
Yeah, the lobby used to be just packed, people sitting around, bringing their children, and their children getting bored, and having to wait for that long, little kids, and you now go there, and it's really quiet. It's really nice, people get in and out quickly, and, yeah...
Does it smell like McDonald's?
Yeah. I like the idea of their brains, Kathy's brain and others' brains now being in the computer, so I hope you don't mind sharing.
I think David calls that automated intelligence.
Artificial intelligence.
Automated.
Real intelligence.
But thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Maybe we should do a public service announcement. You know, here's Kathy and Scotty's brains, here's Kathy and Scotty's brains, in HS Connect. Anyhow, I'd like to introduce a few of the key players who are here from the IT side. First, Brian Bostwick. Brian heads up the Applications Division, and the whole development team is under him. Barbara Peterson, our Business Relationship Manager, who manages the VAs and the project managers and scrum masters. Nathan Riplinger, who also manages the VAs, and Carol Jepson, who is our scrum master and kept us moving forward through the project in the last, at least the last year. And I think that's it from IT. I also just want to thank the board for their confidence in us and their support of us going forward. You know, we've been working at this now for, it's coming up on its third anniversary in August, but every step of the way, the board has been behind us, and I know, I personally, and I'm speaking for Cheryl as well, we really appreciate that vote of confidence, that support in order to get to the achievement, and it means a lot, I think, to all of us to have that direction, that green light, and that backing. Thank you.
I will. So, I'll just read what's, this is the 2017 Achievement Award winner, this is the certificate that I'll give to you all, and it says, "That some achieve great success is proof to all that others can achieve it as well." Abraham Lincoln. So, I think it's what you talked about, is the success, the creativity, the innovation. I think that's sometimes what people think when we work for government, the minute we take that job, that's all gone, and that's simply not true. And fortunately, we have great people working in our county and that have been given the ability, the rein to be creative and innovative, and I think that says a lot for leadership all across the county, so, thank you very much. If you all don't mind, we will go out and take a picture, and then we'll come back in and we'll resume the rest of the agenda, so. the VAs, and Carol Jepson, who is our Scrum Master and kept us moving forward through the project in the last, at least the last year. So, and I think that's it from IT. I also just want to thank the Board for their confidence in us and their support of us going forward. You know, we've been working at this now for, it's coming up on its third anniversary in August, but every step of the way, the Board has been behind us. And I know, I personally, and I'm speaking for Cheryl as well, we really appreciate that vote of confidence, that support in order to get to the, to the achievement. And it means a lot, I think, to all of us to have that, that direction, that green light and that backing. Thank you.
I will. So I'll just read what's, this is the 2017 Achievement Award winner. This is the certificate that I'll give to you all. And it says, "That some achieve great success is proof to all that others can achieve it as well." Abraham Lincoln. So I think it's what you talked about is the success, the creativity, the innovation. I think that's sometimes what people think when we work for government. The minute we take that job, that's all gone. And that's simply not true. And fortunately, we have great people working in our county and that have been given the ability, the rein to be creative and innovative. And I think that says a lot for leadership all across the county. So, so thank you very much. If, if you all don't mind, we will go out and take a picture, and then we'll come back in and we'll resume the rest of the agenda. So.
Hey, Megan. Welcome to the pod.
Okay, we'll resume the meeting. And is there anyone who would like to speak during Citizen Comment period on anything that isn't on the agenda today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Agenda. Our motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as approved, as presented.
Second?
Motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have two general business items, this, well, one general business and one public hearing. Our first is General Business Case WVR 17-013, Olson Property Subdivision Request to Waive Fees for Minor Subdivision of Land. And our presenter today is, hi. Summary, Jan Yekis, there you are. Planning Division Manager, Public Works and Development. And our attorney is Mr. Robert Hill, Senior Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Hill, it's not a public hearing, but is there a foundation?
This is a general business item, just a matter for Board's decision to approve. Noticing is required and no public hearing.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Yekis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the WVR, and the case number here stands for waiver. This is a request for a waiver of fees, and that would be application and land development review fees for planning and engineering in association with doing a minor subdivision application. So this is not a decision on the subdivision itself. That will come later. It requires a public hearing. This is just a decision on whether or not to either fully or partially waive fees associated with the processing of a minor subdivision application. In this case, the applicants are Mr. and Mrs. Olson. They own 20 acres of what was a, or technically still is, a 40-acre parcel. At some point in the past, as you are familiar with, this has happened many times, and especially the rural areas of the county, someone goes in and records a deed and transfers property. And essentially, in their minds, they've subdivided that land, and they sell off part of it. In this case, the 40 acres was divided into two 20-acre pieces, recorded that way many years ago. The Olsons, in fact, purchased that property quite some time after that occurred and have lived on the property for many years since then. We did, and going through records that the Olsons had and in records that we had within the county, found that there had been some discussions with prior property owners about resolving that by going through a formal subdivision process. But for whatever reason, that does not seem to have occurred. We did find that there were some records that had been destroyed by fire. So we did not have a staff report from the Board of Adjustment case when there were some additional improvements made on the property. But we do have the record of the Board of Adjustment action. So we do know that there were building permits issued, that there were actions taken by the Board of Adjustment, that we cannot find a record that at any time, an actual subdivision plat meeting the requirements of state statutes came in and was processed and legally divided the land. The Olsons unfortunately found this out only when they went to sell the property. A prospective buyer contacted the county, doing due diligence, asked, you know, if they could do certain things with the land, and found out that the land had been subdivided without going through that formal process and that that process would be required. And my understanding is that that buyer walked away from the deal. So they are coming forward requesting some relief of these fees. They will still have costs associated with hiring a surveyor and having the plats prepared and such. Staff did, in light of the county's policy, to try to cover at least a portion of our costs. We did present some alternatives in the staff report. The total application fees for doing this property would be $11,736. And that's broken down as $5,000 in engineering services, $2,236 in a master drainage plan. Engineering has pointed out that this property has been developed, and with the subdivision, we're not aware that any new development will occur. So they are fine with waiving that fee entirely, that $2,236. And then the planning fees are based on the number of sheets that are typically in a subdivision plat of this type. And we estimated there, there would be two sheets, and the fees for that would be $4,500. We presented two other alternatives that you might want to consider, but then you can also consider other alternatives that might come to mind. Or you could waive the fees entirely. I did want to correct an error in the staff report on page two under Background. As I said, there's a, there's a lot of paperwork associated with this, and I apologize. I really misunderstood what developments were where. The second home and the riding arena are actually on the Olsons' property, and I said they were on the adjoining 20 acres. Not that that's really all that relevant to the fee waiver, but I did want to make that correction. So you have several options in front of you. You have quite a bit of information that the Olsons provided in advance. Mr. and Mrs. Olson are here and would like to address the Board. I did want to note one other thing. Staff is working on a process that we hope will be approved at some point in time, that will help to resolve this backlog of these illegal subdivisions that were done many, many years ago, and that people have often purchased without knowledge, that that, that they were buying a lot that was not legally platted. However, that process is going to take some time to get through. We can't guarantee that it will even get approved. If you have questions about that process, Jason Reynolds is here. If you have questions about engineering fees, Sarah White is here. So we have several staff members here who can help to address questions. But unless you have questions for me at this time, Mr. and Mrs. Olson are here and would like to speak with you.
Any questions, Commissioner Conti?
Just for clarity, and I apologize, I did read through this, but it was last week. And so, and today, my computer was having some technical difficulties.
No way with that.
Upstairs, you know, getting some IT work. So I do apologize. It's not right in front of me. Which fee are, exactly are we asking to be waived? Is it the, the full $11,000 or one of the particular fees that you itemized?
The Olsons are requesting a full fee waiver of the $11,736. Staff presented some different options. One of the, the process that Jason and Bob have been working on is a revision to our subdivision exemption process. So we don't have that in place yet, but as an example of something that you might want to consider for a reduced fee, we provided what the fees would be to date for a subdivision exemption. And those would come to $3,500 rather than the $11,700 roughly. You also had a case not too long ago that came before you, that a property owner thought they had done everything that was necessary to make a lot line adjustment. It did not create a new lot, but was making a lot line adjustment. And then found out years later, as they went to, as an adjoining property owner, went to sell some property, that theirs had also not been through the legal subdivision process. And in that case, it was an administrative plat, so there were no hearings involved, whereas this one will involve hearings. But in that case, it was also the current property owner that had initiated the earlier action. In this case, the property owners had nothing to do with the action to divide the property and were unaware of it. So we felt like that was another option that you might want to consider. The fee that that property owner paid for the lot line adjustment was $1,000. So tossing out just some options there for you to think about as a comparison. If you have questions, again, about that as you go on. Do you have a copy of your staff report? Because I can give you mine. Okay. And mine has a lot of extra background to it than what you got, but I'll just go ahead and provide it for you during the meeting.
Any other questions? Yeah, I just had one, and it was, it's really on, I think that there were some deeds.
Yes, so.
Explain that to me. I, I got that in the, I think it was Mrs. Olson's letter.
Yeah, how these tend to happen is that someone, oftentimes, it's an exchange between family members, you know, maybe they're selling off part of the property to adult children or, you know, a relative. Sometimes it's unrelated people. But how these things happen is that they go in and record new deeds with the two new legal descriptions. We're very fortunate that in this case, these two lots actually do meet the minimum lot size for the zoning district that they're in. Sometimes we find ourselves with a real mess because the properties wind up being smaller than would be allowed in the zoning district that they're in. But the recorder's office, their job is to record things, you know? So people bring in deeds or other documents, they get recorded. And people typically think they've done the right thing. They don't think to check with the planning department and see, like, is there some other process that I need to go through? So as I mentioned, there were some communications with some prior property owners about resolving that. There's a letter in the package from one of the property owners that says, you know, I would like to subdivide my property. There's documentation that some well permits got held up because that subdivision process was taking longer. But we can't actually find any records that a legal subdivision with a plat meeting the state requirements ever occurred and was recorded.
And indeed, the, the recording of these deeds would not trigger anything to you all that, to take a look at?
Not reliably and consistently. And I will say, this isn't something unique to Arapahoe County. I have worked for a number of county and city agencies, and this has been a problem everywhere I've been, in several different states. That's their job. They record documents. So it's, it's been difficult to get consistency with having that department, you know, with new staff coming on and that sort of thing, to reliably refer people to the planning department. Now, and keeping in mind, too, that many of these occurred many years ago. We're talking like 25, 30 years ago sometimes. So we didn't have the same ability to electronically research records at that time. We didn't have the same level of communications between departments at that time. So a lot of these that have occurred are older actions that took place.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yekis. Good morning, Ms. Olson. Would you just state your name and address for the record?
Alberta Olson, address 288 North Manila Road, Bennett, Colorado, which is, I believe, unincorporated Arapahoe County. First off, we really appreciate the opportunity to address the Board today. As you can imagine, it's regarding this issue that came to our attention very recently. We listed our property for sale, and we actually had a contract submitted, ready to sign. And the folks that were purchasing wanted to use it for a different purpose. And that was when we discovered that apparently it was an illegal plot of 20 acres. That was 40 and had been divided, but either incorrectly or not registered with the county. You can imagine our surprise. We've lived there for 13 years, have paid taxes, have had no issues. And then to find that upon having that sale ready to go through, we had to, they, they pulled out of the sale. Because we were told at that point, when we talked to the county, it was going to take around $11,000 and a minimum of eight to nine months to resolve the issue. The reason we're here today is that, obviously, that was a shock to us. It was not something we were expecting or that we could have anticipated. And so I appreciate that you were not the folks that were working back at the time when all this was going on and being registered or whatever. But, you know, we purchased 13 years ago and have been living there since then. Apparently, this issue came up in the 90s. And, and then again, in 2001, there was an arena that was put on the property before we moved in, a riding arena and a second manufactured house, which required permits. And so one would assume that everything was correct in order to have those go through. So finding this out, we just feel that it is absolutely not only no fault of ours, but we had no idea until this came up. And financially, we just don't have the means to put $11,000 into correcting this. Plus, we have already lost one sale and have other people waiting for the resolution of the issue. And so what we're requesting is really full waiver of fees, and also an expedited process to allow us to continue with the sale of our property. You know, that's, I mean, we just really want to encourage, if you guys could look at that and see if that's something that you could do. We know that you are in the kind of process of trying to fix this. We researched and looked into it, and there are a number of property owners in our specific area and also throughout the county where this is an issue. There was some evidence that well permits and other things had been applied for way back when, 30, 30 years ago. And it doesn't seem as though that process was completed, but there was, there was an attempt to do that. And so taking that into consideration, that there was some attempt back then, and we had no knowledge of this situation, we've kind of been thrown into it, and would really appreciate you considering our submission for no fees on this. And Jan covered everything. Great job uncovering all the different issues. But one of the things that she mentioned about the other property owner where they applied and received a $1,000 fee, they did have a prior knowledge, and they did attempt to do some work on that. We had no prior knowledge of it. It's something that's thrown at us. So we're hoping that you will look on that favorably and work with us to allow us to sell our property and move on from there. So do you have?
Mr. Olson?
Do you mind?
No, go ahead.
Gerald Olson, same address. We do have evidence that we just received in the last couple of weeks, that there was a survey and a plat created back in 1984, when the original owner of the 40 acres wanted to try to turn it into two 20 acres, because I think two brothers and their wives wanted to live there. And so we didn't know this existed until just recently, but it says that they located the four pins around the corners of the 40-acre property, and they set new pins on the dividing line between the two 20s. And we've, we've found those pins. So it has been surveyed in the past, and we would similarly like you to take that into account because account because there is going to be a considerable cost to resurvey the property and to make the drawings. So, you know, I really feel badly for the people in the county, or in all the counties that have been stuck with this. You know, when we look it up online, the lawyers and the legal folks try to scare future landowners into taking this into account by saying, you will not be able to get a building permit for your property if it's not legally subdivided. Well, we've had three or four or five building permits issued for these two properties and it's not been found. You will not be able to get utilities for the property if it's not legally subdivided. Well, we have, you know, two sets of utilities, gas, electric, phone, everything you could need, so does the adjacent property owner. So this thing is very hard to track down. If we just walked away from it today, we could probably sell it to somebody else tomorrow if that person didn't call the zoning department and ask. So, because that's what happened to us. We didn't know, we didn't even know to ask. So we appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jackson? Oh, okay. Any questions for the Olsons? Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, this question's for staff. Excuse me. Mrs. Olson mentioned a fee waiver and an expedited process, and I wonder if somebody could speak to, can we do that? And if so, would that save them some money?
It only saves money if you waive fees because staff doesn't have the authority to waive fees. And so whatever you do today will determine what fees they pay, if any. Right. As far as the process, it does go through two public hearings, so we have a certain amount of time that's required there. I haven't looked at the survey, staff hasn't looked at it, so I'm not sure that it would meet the requirements of what we have to have in order to record a subdivision. So I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, I think they will probably wind up hiring a surveyor to prepare documents that meet the requirements for a legal subdivision. In spite of, hopefully the documents they have will save them money because it will make it easier for the surveyor. But that's really kind of outside my ability to really safely assume. As far as the process, I don't think it's going to take us anywhere close to nine months to get through this process because we don't have a rezoning involved. But one thing that we can do, once it, once it comes in and we're scheduling those hearings, typically we go to Planning Commission first, make sure there are no issues at Planning Commission, and then we notice for the board hearing. We can save some time by noticing both hearings there so that they're only like maybe a week apart. Plats tend to be fairly technical reviews rather than something controversial like a rezoning. So it's highly unlikely that there will be any problems once it gets to Planning Commission because staff makes sure that it meets all the requirements before we take it. So we can save a little time there, but we're talking weeks of saving time.
So I certainly understand their, their issue of wanting to sell a piece of property and having it in limbo for months or whatever, markets change, they want to move on with their lives, all of that. So what would you say, give us a time range of what you think this, let's say, doing whatever we can to, to make this quicker. What kind of timeline are we talking about here?
Probably three to four months. We have to send it out on referral to other agencies and give them an opportunity to comment. Then we do, as we schedule hearings, letters to adjoining property owners have to be mailed at least 15 days in advance, the sign has to be posted at least 15 days in advance. If we do the hearings jointly, then we're only doing that once instead of twice, so that saves us some time there. But bare bones is like three months. And that's really dependent on getting a good, clean survey document in so that we don't have to keep sending corrections back to the surveyor.
Okay. And, and that's about the limit of what we can do given our legal requirements?
If we can do better, we'll do better, but...
I understand.
That's probably the most lean that I could project.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm hoping that Jason's going to talk to us about some kind of process or something.
Jason Reynolds with Planning. And one of the things we're looking at is our subdivision exemption. One of the, it provides an alternative process that goes directly to the Board of County Commissioners. The minor subdivision has to make a stop at the Planning Commission. And it's a way to make these less expensive for folks who had no involvement in the improper subdivision in the past. We will have a study session about subdivision exemptions at 11:00 AM on July 17th, where we'll have more detail, including draft code. But we're trying to make it available to more property owners. Our initial review, just looking at properties that were smaller than 10 acres in size and had a house on them, there are approximately 40 of those out in the county, and I'd wager that nearly all of those were improperly divided. So, and that's just looking at smaller than 10 acre parcels. The ones we're talking about today are 19 acres and larger, so there's likely even more of those out there. So, you know, the goals with this exemption process will be, will be to make it faster and less expensive, just generally less of a hassle for those property owners who are in this situation.
Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Jason. Would it be fair to say that the Olsons are kind of pioneers? This could be one of the, one of the cases that you're talking about that brought this to the point where we're looking at changing the rules. And because they're the first case right now, we haven't made those changes, so the timing that Jan explained to us is going to, there's really no way around that right now.
Right. Yeah, and we've had a number of inquiries, you know, with property transfers, you know, over many months. I believe we talked to the board about this, you know, last August to get some direction. And, you know, we've been doing research and pulling together the regulations in our spare time. And I believe we have something that's nearly ready to go, but yes, the Olsons are acting as the canary in the coal mine, as it were.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Now, Mr. Olson, you want to come down so we can get you? Yes, please.
I'm sorry, to bring this point up, but...
That's okay.
The fee is still for the revised subdivision process, $3,500. And that's still a lot of money, especially for people who had no prior knowledge. And, you know, I think if the county really wanted to serve their citizens, they would try to make this a no-cost type of remedy for people that had no idea and were taken aback by this problem with their property.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. You know, I think that that is, and we will have an opportunity to discuss that in July to see what, what parameters we might be able to set and then what, and then have flexibility around that as well, depending upon the circumstances. And so of what, what was done in the past, what records we have and, and that kind of thing. But, okay. There are no further questions? Commissioner Baker, would you like to make a motion?
Am I allowed to explain?
Absolutely.
A little bit first.
Yes.
Let me, I know that there are costs that our staff incur, there's their time involved with this. And I was probably of the mind that, that a reduced or partial fee waiver would be appropriate in this case until I heard about the timing and the fact that an offer made on the Olson's property has already gone away and there are other people waiting. So time, I think, is of the essence. And, and the county has its processes. As a government entity, there are things that have to be done. I applaud staff for looking at a way that other people that this comes up in the future can be made a little bit easier than it's being done for the Olsons. But because of that, I, I'm going to make the motion to approve a full fee waiver, just as kind of a sorry to the Olsons for having to go through this. So in the case of WVR 17-013, Olson Property Subdivision Request for a Waiver of Fees for a Minor Subdivision Application and Related Planning and Engineering Review Fees, I move to approve a waiver of all fees outlined in the Board Summary Report dated June 7, 2017, in the amount of approximately $11,736.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Conti. Any questions, comments? I'm going to go ahead and approve this as well, but I have some caution that, you know, I don't want this to set a precedence because I do think that there are, there will be unique circumstances for many of these properties. And, you know, I want to make sure that those are all considered fairly. I do think that streamlining the process is, with so many properties, who would be impacted by this, I think streamlining is important because there are probably others who are wanting to, it's probably driven by the sale of a property, selling, selling half of it or selling their property. And then when you are talking about timing and, and all of the things that were mentioned earlier, I think it is important. So, so I will, for my part, support the motion, but with caution, and looking forward to further discussion. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. I'm having a hard time with this, not because I don't empathize and sympathize with the Olsons, because I do, but I'm concerned about, A, setting precedence, and B, trying to figure out a way for us to pay for our staff time. Because regardless of the error and whose fault it was and all of that, we still have to put in a considerable amount of staff time preparing the documents, having public hearings and so on. And so if we do 40 of these, that's over $400,000, that our budget is, I'm just really mindful of the county budget and, and our need to serve our citizens in a lawful way. So I'm really conflicted on this one. Kind of heart and head may be difference here, but, you know, I, I just really need to state that, that I, I have some serious reservations about it. I, I'm not going to fight it, this is not a, you know, it's, it's just, I think we have to be very, very careful of waiving fees as a matter of course, because then we are in hope. So I just need to get that off my chest.
No other comments? We will, why don't we take a poll from the board? If you would call for, all those, yeah, all those in favor, and we will take that vote first by roll call.
Commissioner Jackson?
I don't know yet, I'm still fighting in my head yet.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Conti?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go with the rest of the board, not to be contrary.
But I, you know, I will add the comment that I think all of us are very concerned about our going forward and our, our budget is extremely tight. And looking at the volume of properties like this, it is, you know, it may be doubtful that this is a, this is the kind of course that we can take, set this course for every single property that comes forward. So, but we will have an opportunity to discuss that and take a position on that in July. So with that, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. We are going to move on to, this is a public hearing, case Z16-004, LSTRE Preliminary Development Plan, and our presenter is Mr. Bill Skinner, and our attorney is Mr. Robert Hill, Senior Assistant County Attorney. And Mr. Hill, would you set the foundation, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This preliminary development plan application has been noticed by publication, mailing and posting of the property in accordance with the code. The board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner?
Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. The application in front of you is for a preliminary development plan. This is the zoning and use approval oriented portion of a two-step planned unit development process. The property is nine and a half acres. It's located on Adam Aircraft Circle, which is generally northwest of the Dove Valley Business Park, south of the Broncos Training Area, and north of Centennial Airport, to give you a location on the map overall. It abuts Centennial Airport, it's a couple streets removed from the Broncos Training Facility. Property was initially zoned, that area has two big zoning actions that have occurred. Initially, in 1983, someone presented an application for a PDP known as Dove Valley Business, or Dove Valley Air Park. It covered a very large expanse, including what we now know as Dove Valley Business Park. That 1983 PDP application was approved by the board in 1986, so some time and consideration went into it. There are a few lots that remain from that 1983 application that have sat, for various reasons, in an undeveloped state. This lot's had the current zoning approved on it for over 31 years. Just for a sense of timescale there, I'm going to turn 50 soon, and the year this was approved, I graduated from high school. A lot of things happened. So staff took a keen interest when someone came forward and wanted to discuss this. I've talked to many potential developers over the period I've been with the county, but they always seem to run into some kind of a dead end. This applicant, Troy Porus, seemed to be willing to tackle it, and when I said the things that normally explain the process made the other people just go blank and walk away, he remained enthusiastic. He has been so throughout the process. It's a nine and a half acre parcel. It's currently undeveloped. We sent it out for referral, heard nothing back negative during the referral process. The Planning Commission asked, why wasn't this referred to the City of Centennial when we got to the Planning Commission hearing? It's about two blocks removed from the City of Centennial, so we had no requirement to send it to Centennial, and really it just, you know, it was far enough away that it didn't seem like something, we wouldn't have sent the one next door to it on either side to Centennial either. But the Planning Commission expressed interest. So we did, we reached out, made a special effort. I called Jenny at the City of Centennial and said, hey, could you turn something around for me quickly? And she did. The Centennial has no comment on this, so we've taken care of the Planning Commission concern. concern. Staff recommendation for this is for approval because the applicant made a special effort to look at what is already approved in nineteen eighty-six, plus what Dove Valley Business Park MDP, the one you're more familiar with, has approved for uses around this. They tried to be as compatible as possible with what's on the ground now and in the area. It's fairly textbook when it comes together as far as trying to achieve compatibility, looking at existing zoning. There will be, one of the commissioners asked me if we had more detail on this site at this time, and that will be the second step, a final development plan that will come forward later. But we do have the owner here today and he's certainly open to discussion and questions. I'd be happy to take any kind of high level questions and we can go to the owner for anything else you'd like to discuss.
I had just, are there any proposed uses that are not approved in the Dove Valley area today? It was confusing to me allowable, there's a list of thirty-three and then a list compared with a list of eleven and it was hard for me to compare what was there and what's proposed, what's new.
Okay. So the list of eleven, that's what they have right now, if they walk out the door. The list of thirty-three was gathered, it includes most of the list of eleven and quite a few that are approved uses off this site, on the surrounding sites in the Dove Valley Master Development Plan, Dove Valley Business Park Master Development Plan. There are a couple that have been added in that take concepts that exist in those other two documents and hone them down, narrow them down a little bit more. You may want to ask more about that. One, one that comes to mind is I don't believe vehicle recovery was specifically cited in either of those documents. The components involved in that are largely allowed in the other two under something like outdoor storage. So, you know, there's a, that's where we're creating that compatibility relationship. One use that did get modified is the Dove Valley, I want to make sure I get this one right, right. Both the existing air park zoning and the Dove Valley Master Development Plan allow hotels and motels. As you're well aware, residency near Centennial Airport is always a hot button. Centennial Airport asked that the final version of this document specifically exclude extended state hotels. That's a commission of approval, the, the applicant's on board with that. Just pretty much consider that a no contest, everyone's happy with that. But that would be another modification to what's on the ground compared to what's being proposed.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. So are you saying that the, these two lists are sort of just developed for a specific site? I thought zoning had specific things that were allowable or not allowable as a general category. From what you were talking to with Commissioner Sharp, it sounded to me like, it's like, well, for this specific spot, we've added these things and taken away these other things. So when I looked at the list, I saw nothing that like jumped out at me that in my mind would have been incompatible, so I'm not contesting the list. But now I'm wondering, we don't make up lists of acceptable things for any given parcel, do we?
That is an astute, complex and nuanced question. I am going to give you a best answer, which is a little bit of planning theory one-on-one. In Repose County, there's two broadly, broad categories, two styles of zoning that we do. We do conventional zoning, what in past years has been called straight zoning, where you say, here's a B district. Certain things can occur in B districts and then you go across the map and you can look and see, well, there's one, there's one, there's one, there's one, and you can expect that list may be applied to any one of those. We also have, not just us, many, most jurisdictions have something called Planned Unit Development, which has been in play, just going to guess, it's been a workable concept for the last thirty years in North America, maybe a little longer, where you select the boundaries and they may be large, like Prosper, they may be small, sometimes even limited to a single lot if you have some unique situations, and it is a negotiated zoning package. Now the trade-offs, on the face of it, it looks a little curious. Why would you cut a special deal with one property, county? The trade-off is, well, while we are considering their unique zoning request, we are also asking for a property that results in better improvements. So there is a trade-off. Yeah, we can consider what you're asking for, but we are going to require more of you. So that's pretty much it, conventional zoning versus planned unit development.
Thank you. We've, we've had several planned unit developments come before us and I guess I never really understood plan exactly. See, I didn't take planning one-on-one, so I didn't know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Baker?
Mr. Skinner, I, I noticed in here that one of the planning commissioners had concerns about allowing accessory outdoor storage. Is how much of that will be taking place if we approve this? I just wanted to know a little bit more about what the, and it may be a question for the owner as well, but interested in why the planning commissioner had a concern about that?
The simple mention of outdoor storage in any zoning approval can make some people cautious, depending on the day, depending on their personal experiences. Having it listed as accessory, it's a thing that we consider regularly in the Planning Division. What exactly does accessory mean? Does it mean ninety-nine percent of the property can be used this way because one percent of it is the business office, which is the primary use? Or should it be narrowed down to a percentage? We don't have a general policy on that because we have good examples that function either way and were we to look for it, we could probably find some not so good examples that are done either way. That can be part of the discussion here. An area could be defined, an area could be discussed or negotiated. The third trade-off that come into play with planned unit development is the Board has a very, very strong, you know, high level authority to request or condition things as they see fit for the good of the county overall.
So I am thinking of my question here, which is, why are we, does this sort of open up the door for all the other air park properties that have different, you know, and, and I don't know how many there are, I was trying to look through here and see if we had, but are we now going to have a request from any of these properties to go to the extended list of, thank you, of properties who would like to have this and then they have to go through the process as well?
You could. The, the, the larger expanded list more closely mimics the more recent Dove Valley Business Park MDP. The reason that you have a quilt work, a patchwork of parcels under the nineteen eighty-three application, nineteen eighty-six air park approval, is they're originally all the same ownership as holds, well, all a similar ownership group to what holds the Master Development Plan Dove Valley Business Park now. At the, pardon me while I make sure I get these right. Dove Valley wasn't happy with what they had done in the nineteen eighty-six zoning because they realized things had moved on. So I believe nineteen ninety-nine, they wanted to rezone the same area, but they did not want to get involved with seeking approvals from owners of parcels they had already sold. So this parcel, as well as some of the patchwork around it, anything that's still under the air park was something that was left out of the Dove Valley MDP. And it literally is a patchwork. I have to look at that document, I've been dealing with that document now since two thousand and four and I have to refer to it every time something comes up to make sure I know what zoning I'm under. Your question about, does this open this up to everything in the leftover patchwork parcels that are still under that air park zoning, the eighty-six zoning? It doesn't automatically change that. This is constrained to this one property, but it would supply a precedent and it would supply something staff would look to as a compatibility issue. Someone comes in next door and says, well, they're right there, I'm going to be exactly compatible with them, we are obliged to consider that. So on the one hand, does it move the line a little bit? It does. But it's moving it closer to what many of those properties already have in the MDP. That's it, that's the best way to put it.
So on this list of thirty-three, as I said, I had trouble drawing a parallel here between the two, but are any of these, and I think it kind of gets back to my original question, are any of the thirty-three on here not included in the Dove Valley?
Yeah, at this, at this level of specificity, yes. There are.
And can you tell me which ones are not? I'll tell you, I, I have a lot of concerns over the one you mentioned, which is the, where is it on here?
Number seven, I believe.
Yeah, vehicle recovery and storage.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, and, and given the fact that other, there are probably others in here, that others may follow, I think it's important that this list be a list that we as a county feel comfortable with allowing all of these uses. Because if we don't, it is going to set a precedence for other properties coming in. So.
All right. I, I think that use seven is, it's a new level of specificity on what would have otherwise be considered outdoor stor, you know, under outdoor storage. Now that's, you know, that involves the actual moving on to moving off of the property and the storage. I mean, we're not talking about maintenance, repair, scrapping, that falls under something that's not allowed anywhere in either of these underlying area plans. And then of course, the hotel motel's use, number twelve, is going to be modified, so I can't say that's direct carryover. I do believe the rest of the, everything else is almost verbatim from something that's previously approved.
Okay.
It occurs to me that one thing I could have done is provide all the approved uses in the Dove Valley MDP. It would have maybe helped you flesh this list out.
I'm just looking for concern that something in that area is, that we don't already have approved and have already gone through that process might crop up here. And, and, you know, and I do think that the outdoor storage depends on what that is in terms of outdoor storage, because I do think that that is something that I have heard from businesses in the, in the area that depending on what kind of outdoor storage and, and the quality of how that looks, could be an issue. So, and I can address that with the, with the applicant, you know, as well, but.
The, the county's definition of outdoor storage, this isn't going to be perfect, but the opening statement is something similar to the outdoor storage of any materials, it is a wide open definition. Materials, we do not go on to define materials somewhere else, but that's why we say recovery and storage, particularly the storage part, would have been generically capturable under outdoor storage elsewhere in Dove Valley. It's, it's, it's hard to anticipate every interpretation of every use.
I get concerns about the RV storage and, you know, if, if you're going to have a lot of other parts, materials, lumber, you know, things like that, my concern would be how potentially that could look really, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to use junky as a word here, but, because there are, there are businesses in that area who've really invested in their buildings and, you know, they don't want to be next to something that really will look that way or looking down on that from an adjacent property. So I can address that with the applicant and then we will get to, I'll open a public hearing for.
Okay.
Any other comments from Mr., or questions from Mr. Skinner? Okay, thank you.
So our applicant is Troy Porus, if I can bring him up.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome.
So I'm Troy Porus, happy to answer any questions you have.
You just state your address for the record.
My home address, is that?
Your business address. If that's home, that's fine too, but.
Five one three zero Brighton Boulevard, Denver.
Okay.
So I'm happy to address any concerns you have, just in terms of a little bit of history. You know, I've been, we bought this property two plus years ago, this summer, so in July, I think. And I've been working closely with Bill. My impression was that we were under a sort of old zoning regime from the eighties that almost all the properties surrounding us had moved to sort of this newer one. And frankly, I thought that, my general impression was that staff and perhaps the commissioners would be happy with us moving towards this newer structure. And so that's what we're trying to do. The, I'm happy to address any specific questions you have.
Well, my question was really on the additional uses and I understand that you looked at other things in the, in the Dove Valley area and what was already approved there, but if you could address the, I, I am concerned about vehicle recovery and storage, and there may be other things, because I think we have somebody who is maybe concerned about one of these two, and then outdoor storage as a principal use.
Sure.
Seven and seventeen specifically are concerning to me.
Yeah, so we have, I'm not a super experienced developer and as we've, we've had a for sale sign, for lease, various sort of options there and different people have approached us about particular uses. And so a couple of those, I actually don't have that numbered list in front of me either, but for example landscaping, I'm not sure that was specifically included in one of the previous Dove Valley uses, but we had a landscaper that potentially wanted to rent part of it. And so I don't know what number that is, but we added that one in there. You know, with the basic idea as a developer, right, that we want flexibility, right? We had a tenant comes along and, and it's going to be a, a great tenant, keep things nice and clean, organized, going to pay a lot of taxes, we want to be able to rent our, our space to them. And so that's really every change we made there. I mean, we started with the, exactly as Bill described candidly, I started with a list of uses in the current, current plan, then the master, the Dove Valley Master Plan and just added all those in, and then a couple of other ones were added specifically in response to potential tenants. And the interesting thing is, I believe that, to Bill's point, that actually under the, this kind of a irony of the whole thing, that under the current zoning, most of those uses would be allowed, you know, there's sort of the question of how, how you spend that, right? We never intend, our general intention is not to use the space without first putting buildings near the front, so they'd be sort of shielding from the road. And then tenants might use storage space, whether it's for parked vehicles or for And then tenants might use storage space, whether it's for parked vehicles or for landscaping materials, or candidly, we're in conversation with a roofing company who would have pallets of shingles and other things like that, all sort of behind buildings though, right? We don't intend to just sort of open it up and say, you know, space for rent and park a bunch of RVs or those sorts of things there.
And I certainly appreciate as a businessperson that you want to be able to lease your property to, or ultimately sell it, or whatever you would like to do to anybody who has, has shown an interest. My concern is a little bit different. I want that too. I mean, I want the tax dollars and all that, but I also want to make sure that the area stays something that is then desirable for others to come in as well.
Absolutely.
And so that any use that it's approved, that's approved, doesn't hurt a property in the area from doing the same thing that you want to accomplish.
Absolutely. And I also share that concern. And specifically, I don't know if we even drop them out, but if you sort of look at our direct neighbors, you know, this is an intangible, but to your point, our plan is to look as nice or nicer candidly than some of the buildings that are there right now, which addresses that concern, although I'm not sure how that flows back to the application we're reviewing right now. But, you know, to the, directly to the east of this property is an Excel Energy building. It's a nice building with a three-acre yard and they store, I was there yesterday, there's some storage, some trailers and trucks and big spools of, I guess, underground cable, all right there. Frankly, our property overlooks that and I don't love the way that looks either. I think it should be screened a little better than it does. Directly to the west of the property is a building that I have to assume has been there since the 80s, a simple metal building with no stone, rock, I mean, just an industrial building, something that would never be allowed to be built now, candidly.
Okay.
And so our plan is whatever we do, it's going to be much, it's going to be required to be much nicer than what's around us anyway.
So would you have any objection to removing any of these?
I would, and in particular, you know, I think it's, we're going to be here, I suppose, with you at an FDP hearing at some point in the future. So I'm happy to disclose, but I am in the towing and storage business, and so we specifically added that. There's an 80% possibility that, or some possibility that we might not use this facility at all for that. We're in negotiations on another piece of property as well. And so specifically, that's important to me. Although I'm happy to show, and I don't know if this is appropriate, and I don't know if we, any chance we could get up there, I could even pass this around, show you another one of our facilities, which frankly is much nicer than anything that's around anyway. You can get a sense of, I don't know if you can just plug in? Do you have a, well, just an iPad? I didn't think that we were going to get into these details, although I'm happy to.
Do you just want them to see?
Yeah, you can, you can go and just. So just to give you a sense of, these are some pictures of a building that we own in Colorado Springs. And frankly, the building that we anticipate building in, on this prop, on the property in, or Rappel County is a, let me show you here this story first. So this building in Colorado Springs is a, is really a metal building with a nice fascia or whatever, but it, but it's a metal building. We would probably build a tilt-up or concrete building or, I can't remember the name of that stone stuff, in Rappel County. So building, but, but this gives you a sense of it. I mean, from the, this is the driveway to, from the outside, you know, what does it look like? Well, it looks like a, in this case, a very nice, and actually, this is completely off subject, but in your county, this kind of screening is not allowed, actually. It's, the requirement is a wood fence, which I actually think doesn't look nearly as nice as this screening. And you could take something like this and then put some columns, you know, every, I don't know, 30 feet or something with stonework or something, which would make it even nicer. But to give you, oh, sorry, so to give you a sense of it, I mean, just the theory that, that it's just ugly from the outside, you know, at least in my assessment, is just not true. Particularly this property, well, you're probably not aware, it has, one of the reasons that it's been challenged, and frankly, it's a significant challenge for us now, it has significant elevation changes. So from one side of the property, it's nine acres, a couple hundred feet across the front. It's 30 or 40 feet lower on the other side. In our process, it seems that it's going to cost hundreds of thousands, potentially a million dollars to kind of level it out. But in that, but the point of telling you that is that really from the street, there's going to be significant sloping, so that whatever it is that's stored on the property from the street really won't be visible at all, because at one end of the property, it's going to be a 30-foot, you know, slope, basically, landscape slope up to the property. And so there's just, won't be, in this case, this property in the Springs is completely flat. You still can't see behind the fencing. And so the theory that, well, let me just say that this is, I think we'll look, what we're going to build certainly will look much nicer than what's around it.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just one question. Thank you, Chair. Will this be a 24-hour-a-day operation?
We're not certain of that. I mean, again, we are not yet determined if we're even going to occupy the property. And let me be clear about that. There's no question that if we do occupy it, we'll only take up a small fraction of the property. And so the kind of tenants that we would anticipate are, again, landscaping company, a roofing supply company, a cabinet, tile manufacturer, granite company, those sorts of businesses. Most of those businesses would not be 24 hours. If we do occupy it with a towing facility, in the beginning, it probably would not be 24 hours either, but it potentially could be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I will open the public hearing and we have Todd. Not sure.
Bobo.
Bobo, okay.
Help me breathe.
No problem.
Thank you for having me.
And you have three minutes and this light, the yellow light will light up when you have about 30 seconds left. But if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Todd Bobo. My wife is also present. We live at 9056 East Colorado Circle. We bought the property in 2014 and we're here regarding the Welch property. Our neighbor, Don Jacobs, has informed us that more than 10 years ago, the property immediately adjacent to the Welch property, when they built the drainage issue on our property and his property, there began a swamp.
Let me just stop you here for a second. So you're not here to speak on this?
No.
This issue?
No. This is on the Welch property.
All right.
This is completely separate.
What's that?
The subject of the study session at 10:30.
At 10:30 that we're a half hour late for?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, we will, yeah, so we will not be able to take your comments right now because they're just on this issue, but we are going to be discussing the drainage and all the issues on the Welch property, and you are welcome, both of you all, to join us. We'll be across as soon as we finish this up.
Okay.
All right. Hey, thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this case P-16-004? Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there, are there any comments or questions? I tell you, I have concerns about, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was your business, but I do have concerns about vehicle recovery and storage there, so I don't, you know, I think the other thing that I have concerns about are the, is the outdoor storage as the principal, principal use. So is, I'll ask for staff's thoughts on that. Let's see if anybody else has concerns as well. Mr. Skinner?
Just one question for Mr. Porras briefly, if I could bring him back. So the vehicles are essentially illegally parked, not, you know, accident cleanup?
That's correct. We're mostly towing vehicles that say, an apartment, or frankly, I noticed on the way in, that you have towing signs on this property. So a place like this probably won't call Wyatt's but once every five years, when the security guard notices, "Hey, this car has been here forever. What's going on with it?" And so they'll call us, we'll come and impound it. Wyatt's Towing is the company we're talking about, by the way. So we'll take it to the impound yard. You know, it looks just like a parking lot, effectively. The impound yard is a bunch of cars, none of which are taken apart or wrecked or anything else. And then there's a period of time, and within 60 days, those cars are moved and sold somewhere else. And so it's really, in fact, there are other municipalities with whom we've spoken who consider our use, don't consider it's our use, like landscapers and such would be outside storage, who would consider our use as a parking lot, because they're all licensed cars that are just sitting in rows.
I think the, the other question was, good question from, was coming in and out of that area at different times during the evening, when I think most of these businesses are probably daytime types of businesses. Are there any apartments, residential areas that are directly adjacent or in an area that might be impacted?
Okay. There's no residential, I'm trying to think, the nearest residential to this would be the apartments and, I don't think they're condominiums. They might be apartments and/or condominiums. There are two, three-story walk-ups that are about mile, roughly a mile, maybe a little more than a mile northeast of here, right, along Broncos. I don't think this would have any direct impact on them. There are some other 24-hour access businesses in the area. The area around the airport with the willingness of money out, you know, willingness of lenders to give money to outdoor storage and mini-storage and self-storage operations in the marketplace right now. It's been a hot topic for us and that part of town is absorbing a fair amount of it.
Well, I would like to, I'll make a motion, but I would like to make a change to that list, and that is that, that there are, this is not to be for vehicles if, I can't find the motion here, but anyway.
Be bright green. The third.
But if you could help me with some wording here, that, on that one issue that we will not, that cars that are damaged in accidents and things like that will not be, I just don't want this to become a lot for wrecked cars. That's my concern. So I would like to modify that, so.
Okay. Let me take a.
Commissioner Jackson.
So just to clarify, the business as described with recovering illegally parked cars would be permissible.
Right.
But smashed cars and wrecks would not.
That's what I.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay. So I don't know how to put that in, in words that are not wrecked, smashed, you know, those kinds of things.
Just off, if I may, off the top of my head, for vehicle recovery and storage, except for wrecked, disabled or inoperable vehicles, would that?
I like that. I would further suggest for comfort levels that you tack on something that says maintenance, repair, or other kind of mechanical work wouldn't be done to the vehicles being parked and/or stored.
Because this has to be, when others come forward, this is not just your property. And so I just want to make sure that we've got this right for, you know, expanding the uses, so you have a good business opportunity. I appreciate that. But that's, that's my primary concern.
Yeah. I have concern with the language. I think wrecked vehicle, totally fine with that. Inoperable, for example, the car that sits here in your parking lot, looks perfectly fine. Is it operable or not? Hasn't moved for three months. One could argue that's inoperable.
We do have a definition in our code and I, fortunately, I didn't bring it with me, but for inoperable vehicles.
Right.
It's actually a zoning violation for unlicensed or inoperable.
Right. But I'm concerned that our towing often does include inoperable, not wrecked, wrecked is different, right? But one of the reasons we tow from apartment buildings are people abandoned the car, the license plate has expired, we're going to impound that vehicle. So it, by your definition, very well may be inoperable or unlicensed. It is, that's one of the reasons we tow it. But that's very different than wrecked. Although I want to be careful to, to your point, it's not just my business, but I want to note that, you know, vehicles wrecked in Rappel County, right, and they have to be stored somewhere. You know, the streets don't get cleared if towing companies don't.
And that's fine. I know that they can be stored somewhere.
Yes. And I'm fine with them not stored here too, and I'm okay with that, because that's not my business. But I just want to make a note that inoperable is a, is a real issue. Inoperable, nonlicensed, there will be inoperable and nonlicensed vehicles. That's different than accident damaged or whatever. You see what I'm saying?
Okay. Yeah.
I think to illustrate his point, I have a car in my garage that I haven't driven in six months. I bet that battery's dead, even though it's licensed and insured. For the counties, it might be considered inoperable. So that may be the fine line that he's talking about, yeah. But I do think, you know, damaged, you're on the right track there. I don't know how to deal with the unlicensed, unregistered, because that is a prime part of the operation from the sound of it.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I could run upstairs real quick and get the code, just see what the definition is.
Just see what the definition of that. Inoperable. I'm trying to figure out how to move this along, so we don't have to have another public hearing, you know? Yes.
But specifically what it sounds like you're concerned about, what I'm okay with is vehicles that have been damaged in an accident and then towed to there is what we don't want, right? Because often, I'll mention, those also are leaking fluids and, and they look ugly and everything else. Maybe we just.
Vehicle recovery. Isn't that what vehicle recovery is?
Well, I think you could say specifically including vehicles damaged in motor vehicle accidents, something like that, specifically excluding that. Recovery is, is in general, a very broad term, right? So my point again about the, you know, we tow from Walmart and K-Marts and King Supers everywhere, and we're, we call it recovery when we go pick up a vehicle that they've asked, large parts been abandoned but looks perfectly fine. And so if you specifically exclude vehicles that have been damaged in motor vehicle accidents.
More an impound lot.
That's a.
Close to a salvage yard.
Well, exactly. It's not at all related to a salvage yard. And I'm fine with the exclusion, and I think this zoning already excludes any kind of salvage or auto, auto, you know, auto parts repair, those sorts of, you pull and pay, that's not at all what we're talking about. And I think that those things are specifically excluded from the definitions currently.
Okay.
That might hit it. That would probably be something you'd want to add, you know, specifically to exclude salvage or mechanical repair operations, were you to append that use somehow? Because staff doesn't want to see that either.
If it's, if that's not included in the list, then it's excluded, correct?
It is.
We need to specifically say it's excluded.
It is, I would say generally excluded, but our zoning administrator, both Al Snyder, acting now, and Tammy King before him, get phone calls looking for definitions of ambiguous terms all the time. We would rather build the specificity in, if there is a particular thing that we simply do not want on that lot, let's put it in the PDP in one way or another, so that, you know, anyone else who comes along and maybe wants to buy the property in the future is aware upfront. in the future is aware upfront. And then if that scenario I cited earlier, the neighbor comes in and says, well, I want to do this too, well, they know specifically what they can't do, and we don't have our potential slippery slope of compatibility.
So if we say vehicle recovery and storage for impound personal purposes, vehicle repair and salvage excluded?
You know, and I may even just make that use category thirty-four. You would add a number, so, so amend the vehicle recovery as stated, but then add a use thirty-four item that says vehicle salvage and.
Salvage.
Yeah, is prohibited.
Is prohibited.
Yeah, because you can, in a use table, not only enable, you can specifically prohibit.
Okay. So I will make, any other comments before? Okay. I'll make the motion in case of Z sixteen dash zero zero four L S T R E P D P. I have read, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We agree with the planning commission recommendation, staff findings for the applicant, application, including all plans, attachments as set forth in the staff report dated June seventh, two thousand and seventeen, and hereby move to approve the request, subject to the following changes and conditions. Number one, prior to the signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant agrees to address public work staff comments and concerns. And two, to add to item number seven in the proposed zoning, to add vehicle recovery and storage for impound purposes, and to add an item thirty-four, which says vehicle repair and salvage is prohibited. Uses are prohibited, or is that? Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sharp, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Are there any comments? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. I have two comments. The first one is, I was very pleased to hear that former Representative Sue Raiden has been appointed as the Arapahoe County Public Trustee. And so she took a little tour of our offices this morning, and I just think it's, it's, we should welcome her. So I just want to welcome her to Arapahoe County. That's the first thing. The second thing is that I had the privilege of attending an Iftar dinner last night. Iftar is the dinner that Muslims have after a day of fasting for Ramadan. So around the world, Muslims observe Ramadan, beginning with the sighting of the new crescent moon. So they fast from morning till evening, and then they, they break the fast in the evening. So I want to wish Ramadan's blessings to all of our Muslim friends. The month of Ramadan is a happy occasion. It's the month that the Muslim holy book, the Quran, was revealed to the Prophet Muhammad. Muslims are called by their religion to celebrate the month by coming together in worship, fasting each day for thirty days from dawn till sunset. The practice teaches discipline and helps the faithful remember their commitment and closeness to the faith. So again, I just want to wish our Muslim brothers and sisters a very happy Ramadan.
Mr. Baker?
I'll be brief, because I know we're late, but I just want to send out good thoughts and my prayers for the speedy recovery of our deputy and the state trooper that were injured in an accident in the eastern part of the county, as they were responding to a call to try to keep us all safe. So that's a very dangerous profession, and they should be applauded, and, and sorry this happened to them.
Thank you, and I want to thank our staff. We had a open space shareback ceremony last Friday. They did a wonderful job. This, the quarter of a cent sales tax that's received in Arapahoe County, which is currently the only sales tax that Arapahoe County has, goes to open spaces, and there are just dozens and dozens of wonderful examples of trails and, and parks, and things that really benefit the members of our community, and that they enjoy all the time. Fifty percent of the proceeds are shared back with the cities, and then there's a grant process after that, that shares more of those dollars back to cities and special districts. And then it also, that money also goes to support our fairgrounds and our seventeen mile house, the heritage locations in our county. So thank our staff for doing a great job. It was a wonderful ceremony. Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to acknowledge an award that our district attorney, George Brockner, received from the employment, the E S G R employment, employment support of the Garden Reserve, which is a federal agency in the Department of Defense, for his, his employment efforts in hiring veterans. This is a very prestigious award. It's presented by the, by, by the Pentagon to companies that, that take a very proactive stance and help hire veterans into their, into their workforce. And it's a national honor, and we all should be very proud of his efforts.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.